Hello and good evening. I'm Florida Today engagement editor, John A. Torres. And welcome to the first of two scheduled candidate forums presented by Florida Today and the League of Women Voters of the Space Coast with help from Eastern Florida State College, which is graciously allowing us to use their auditorium and their beautiful campus and equipment. So, thank you. As you may have read it in a story I wrote over the weekend, tonight was supposed to be a full event. However, school board incumbent Matt Susan and Brevard County Commission candidate Thad Altman both decided to back out pretty much right before the forum. So, we have one race tonight and we really appreciate our candidates showing up here. All three of them are here. They are vying for the District One County Commission seat that was made vacant by a termed-out Rita Pritchett. And so, it's my pleasure to welcome to the stage Democrat Brian Bobbitt, Republican Katie Delaney, and Libertarian Nathan Slusher. We're going to start by allowing you all to introduce yourselves and make an opening statement, telling us about your qualifications, your policies, and why you're seeking office. You'll each have two minutes for this, and I would ask you just to please respect our timekeeper in the audience right there who will signal you when there's about 15 seconds remaining. The fair thing is to start alphabetically, so we will start with Brian Bobbitt right now.
Good evening. My name is Brian Bobbitt. I have been a member of this community for just about the most of my life. I've done a lot of civic work with my former job as Director of Keeper of Art Beautiful. I've served on many boards, and we've done some amazing things throughout our community. The reason for my run is I want to make a change. For too long, we have been getting sold out by our county commissioners. Developers are overrunning our communities, infecting our neighborhoods, and our county commission leadership has not been listening. So, that's the reason I'm running for number one. Two, I want to make some policies that are going to protect our environment. We have clear-cutting projects that are going on throughout the county, or, excuse me, throughout the county, and it's just getting to be too much. We have cities that are not paying attention to their infrastructure. It's affecting our lagoon. It's affecting the future that we're going to be leaving our children. And in a river where I grew up in, fished in, hoped to raise my son the same way, I won't let him touch the water. It's time for a change, and that's why I'm running. There's a major difference between wanting to make some policies and do some things or to make a true difference in our community, and that's why I'm here. I've been part of this community, like I said, for the majority of my life. I have seen how Titusville and North Brevard has been affected by poor leadership, and I'm tired of it, and that's why I'm here.
Okay. We appreciate that. Brian, now up is Katie Delaney.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. My name is Katie Delaney, and I'm running for County Commission District One. Like these two, I grew up here. This is my home, and I care very deeply about our community. And for far too long, I feel like the public has not really been listened to. We're not considered when our policymakers are making their policies, and they've made that perfectly clear, especially this past year. When I'm county commissioner, public participation and public engagement is going to be a top priority for me. I have many policy changes that I'd like to see to make the commissioners more available to the people. I myself, in my office, will be much more available. The growth management and our infrastructure is another huge piece of my campaign. When you look around, there is no plan. There's no plan for how we're growing, and so I see that as a huge problem. And our infrastructure has been neglected for decades now. In addition to that, our public safety officers are in crisis right now. Our fire department especially is hemorrhaging people, and it's because they have not been prioritized the way that they should be. In addition to that, water quality. Not only our drinking water, but the lagoon. We've spent over $600 million on our lagoon, and at least in District One, you can't go in the water. And to me, that is just not right. So, I'm extremely passionate about getting to work. I'm a hard worker, and I can't wait to represent you all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Now, up next, we have Nathan Slusher.
Thank you. My name is Nathan Slusher. I am running for Brevard County Commission District One. I live up in Titusville. Titusville is actually my hometown. I went to Apollo Elementary, Andrew Jackson, and Titusville High School. I graduated in 2008. I own In Raise LLC. We do property services, maintenance, remodels, renovations, that kind of business. We take care of everything from mowing lawns to completely turning homes. So, I'm hands-on all day, every day. I'm running because we have some issues that need addressed. One of them is our infrastructure. I personally believe that our infrastructure needs some serious maintenance on it. And I don't mean we need to pay somebody to rehaul everything. I mean, we need a commissioner that can get out there, see the problems, whether it's a pothole, whether it's a drainage canal, whether it's entire pipes that have collapsed, or whether it's a water facility that needs addressed. We need somebody who can understand that and get out there and get it fixed. Someone who can show up to the homes of the citizens, meet with them, look at their problem that they want to show you, and then make a phone call and get it on the schedule to be solved. My life is about solving problems. This is what I do every day. I have a slogan in my personal life and in my campaign that is "Be the Solution," because I don't want to wait on somebody else to solve problems for me. I'm going to make sure they get solved. I'm a small-business owner, and small business is a huge part of what I'm running on. I am tired of seeing our tax dollars go to large companies to move here. I'm not a fan of grants to big companies for jobs anymore. We've been doing that for a while, ever since the shuttle closed, and it had its purpose. But now, it's time for us to focus on our small business here in Brevard County. It's time for us to focus on our Brevard County citizens, and that is where my focus will remain. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, I've received questions from reporters at the paper, from the League of Women Voters, and even readers. So, we're going to start with this one, and the order will be Katie, Nathan, and Brian. You'll all be asked the same question, and you each have two minutes. And now, I know that you kind of touched on these probably in your opening statement, but if elected, what are the top three issues that you'd like to really sink your teeth into? So, we'll start with Katie.
Sure. Thank you. Like I said before, public participation, growth management and infrastructure, public safety, and water quality. Those have to be our focuses. We have hit a major public trust issue in Brevard County, and part of my campaign has been going to public meetings and speaking on the record, because that way, I'm hoping that that will build the public trust, because then my constituents can come back and say, "This is what you said on public record. Now, live up to it." And so, that has been my first step into helping build the public trust. Public engagement. I would like to have regular town hall meetings. I will have an open-door policy with regular business hours that people know about. I want to have a podcast and a newsletter so that I can help get the people informed. People are busy, and it's our job as the commissioners to make sure our citizens are informed about what's going on. Public safety. If we do not have strong public safety officers, and that includes police and fire, we have nothing. If we don't have a safe community, we have nothing. And then, planning our growth. Of course, growth is good. We can't stay 50 years in the past. We have to keep moving forward. But, the way that we're growing, we cannot be affecting negatively the quality of life of everybody around us. So, we have to make sure that we get a plan and grow in a way that's going to keep the nature of our community. And that goes with our infrastructure as well. And our water quality. Right now, the county commission, they are going to be putting reverse osmosis into our water.
Okay. I think that's time, Katie. I'm sorry. I have to stop you there.
No worries. Thank you.
So, Nathan, the same question. What three issues would you really like to tackle if elected?
Thank you for the question very much. My top three issues are the same. They've been since the very beginning. One, small business. Okay? I want to take the North Brevard Economic Development Zone, which currently is in use for bringing companies for jobs. I want to turn that into a Small Business Resource Center. What does that mean? It means that I want a place where people who want to open a business, whether it's somebody in middle age in life, or whether it's a young person in high school looking to start a business when they graduate, I want a place for them to go to get the answers. How do I start a business? What is a business tax receipt? Who do I talk to? What do I pay the government? The most basic questions that are exceptionally hard to find, as a business owner, I went through it, so I understand. I want that place there for them. Communication. The first thing I plan on doing is making sure the District One office doesn't have a door. I don't believe in closed-door deals. I don't believe in closed-door discussions. I will be removing the door completely. Luckily, I have the tools, because I know how to do that. And I want to make sure we put a doorstop on the front door to the office so that any citizen can come and go. I shouldn't have to knock and be led into an office the taxpayers paid for. That's a little ridiculous. So, I want that door open. I want a coffee pot ready, because communication is everything. I started this, my whole political involvement began by going to meetings and realizing that we are not communicating with the citizens, and so I would write articles and put them out in the community for people to read. And I would put that across multiple platforms so that people would understand what's happening. We have to communicate effectively. And then, as I mentioned in my opening statement, infrastructure, we need to hit on that. And we need to get problems solved and not just send them from department to department. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. The same question.
All right. So, we have a lot of problems going on in North Brevard, and that is mostly due to poor leadership. We have developers that are building over the city's largest aquifers. We have a water treatment facility that cannot operate to full capacity because we can't absorb the water. We are turning North Brevard into a concrete jungle, just like everywhere else, and we're abandoning the environment, and that is going to have major repercussions later on down the road. I want to make it to where our homeowners are no longer getting sold out by developers. They are just victim of people coming in and clear-cutting the woods behind neighborhoods, decreasing property values, flooding their neighborhoods because of poor management, and once the developer gets that money, they're gone. I want to make it now to where if a developer wants to come into our community, they have to pony up and invest in it. A certain percentage of that entire community that they're building needs to go into the infrastructure that they're tapping into, so you, the taxpayer, don't have to pay to fix the roads that they're causing more traffic to run on. They need to invest in the schools that are going to be in that district, because you're not going to pay me enough to be a teacher. Teachers are getting overrun, and you're going to build a place with 900 more homes, and all these kids are going to have to go to that school, and a place where you already got 40 or 50 kids in one class? We need to make adjustments. We need to make it to where if people are going to come in and make millions of dollars on developing in our property, in our community, they need to invest and be part of it. And I've heard a lot of other politicians say, "Oh, that's never going to pass. They're not going to do that." If you're not willing to invest in the community that you're going to make millions on, get lost. Someone else will pay. Other things that we need to do is protect our trees. Trees absorb water. They create shade. They're beautiful to look at, and they're just downright best for the environment, and we are clear-cutting them. I want a certain percentage of a tree canopy to be preserved. It cannot be on the perimeter of a clear-cutting project. And then, the last thing I want to work on is transparency. I want accountability. We are paying a county attorney a lot of money, and we have another attorney negotiating with our firefighters. Let's have some accountability for the people that are getting paid.
Okay. Thank you. And I have a hard time saying "tree canopy" too sometimes.
I know. It gets a little tongue-tied there.
I'm glad that all three of you have all touched on the water issue, because our next question, which will go Nathan, Brian, and Katie, okay? What would you do about issues related to the Indian River Lagoon, stormwater and wastewater, and do you favor extending the lagoon half-cent sales tax for another 10 years? So, I think we're starting with Nathan, Brian, and then Katie.
Thank you very much for the question. All right. As far as stormwater goes, I've already touched on that. I want to get some of the stormwater corrected. We have drainage ditches overgrown. We have piping that's collapsed. I've seen culverts falling and crushing in on themselves. I've seen rocks being put and blocked pipes so neighborhoods flood. These are things that need to be corrected. Stormwater is going to come down to a lot of maintenance and a lot of hands-on getting in the field, okay? The Indian River Lagoon, I actually come at from a different angle than I believe my two opponents up here do. I don't want one government board or two government boards deciding how we fix the Indian River Lagoon. I want to decentralize how we fix it, and I want to incentivize environmental restoration. What does that mean? It means I want to offer a tax abatement for anyone that owns property, any of our civilians and businesses, our small people that own property along the Indian River Lagoon. If they build oyster beds, if they build seagrass beds, if they build clam beds on their property, if we can give tax abatements to these giant companies, we certainly can do it for our people. If we can use tax abatements for economic development, then we can use tax abatements for environmental restoration. There is no reason we cannot make it where all of our citizens get involved. I don't want the solutions to the Indian River Lagoon to become political, because that happens. We sit and watch it in meetings, and it becomes infuriating to the citizens, because we spend a lot of money, and it goes in a circle. So, I want to break that off and get the citizens involved and let them use their property to help the lagoon, because I personally believe, you know, a thousand different small solutions is a lot more effective than one solution chosen by people in a room. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Brian, you're up.
So, the number-one thing that we need to do is stop cities from dumping stuff into our lagoon. There is funding available. There's grant money available on a state level that none of our commissioners have persuaded or pursued. We have the responsibility to take care of this Indian River Lagoon. Years ago, it was the red fish capital of the world. It was one of our most biodiverse estuaries in the world, and that outdoes the Amazons. And now, it is dying. It is dead, and it's because of everything that we have not held our leadership accountable for. We need to make sure that we are taking care of stormwater runoff, and a lot of that's because our developers are not coming up with good plans. And North Brevard, excuse me, Surewood, has been approved. They do not have a water flood plan. Their idea is to put some of it behind some homes, and there's no real studies to be done, but yet, that project has been approved. We need better planning. We need accountability to these people that are coming in, and they better have a plan in place beforehand. Soral is an outstanding program. I've seen a lot of it, and it is ran by, it's monitored by a committee, but they are also citizens and scientists that know a lot more than we do. And a lot of the people that receive Soral funding are private entities, like the zoo, the oyster program with Dixie Crossroads and other great partners that want to make the difference. There's a lot of things we can do, and the fact that these programs can't really plan for their future right now, because they don't know if they're going to have that funding, that's a problem. Our leadership should have kind of led the way and said, "Hey, this is where it's going to go. We need to make sure that funding is available." Stormwater, 100%. I agree with Nathan. Maintenance is a major requirement. We should not be begging our leadership to maintain their properties. That is a huge problem. We've got ditches that are clogged up, culverts that are clogged up. I've seen videos where you have to run a tire through a culvert and the nastiness that comes out of it. There should be no begging for the community and the county to do their jobs.
Okay. Thank you. And now, Katie.
Thank you. Well, one of the things that I would like to do is bring forward a policy to protect our flood plain. That is a huge concern. We have got to make sure that we're protecting that. And our stormwater, not only is it an infrastructure issue, honestly, it's a retainment and recruitment issue. Our Public Works Department is sorely undermanned, and making sure that we have a fully-staffed Public Works Department goes right into making sure that we can maintain all of these things that we need to maintain. And in addition to that, the Eels Program that the citizens passed, I would love to look into options to seeing if it's possible that we can make stormwater parks on some of this conservation land. As far as the Indian River Lagoon, we have got to stop the source. And a huge source of that, especially in District One, is sewage spills. You go into Titusville, you go into Port St. John, and there are some days where you can't even walk the streets, because the smell of sewage is so rancid. We need to, I for one, am glad that the current commission decided to wait on renewing the half-cent sales tax, only because I think that we need to look at that language. I think in the past 10 years, the people have learned a lot. The people on even the Soral Committee have learned a lot, and I think that we can update that to make it more effective and make it make more sense for today, because so much technology has changed. So, I think that leaving that open for us was really great. And then, going after state and federal grants for all of these things as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. This has been a pretty hot topic all year long, and we're going to start with Brian on this one. What would you do about the stalemate in the union contract negotiations between the county and the firefighters' union over relatively low firefighter pay and high attrition?
So, that's an excellent question, and it's just an absolute disgrace how we've let our first responders down county-wide. These people go in and risk their lives for a fraction of pay that people are getting anywhere else, and there is so much money being misspent in our budget that we could take that money and make sure that our first responders are getting paid a lot. Katie mentioned, we are having a mass exodus of firefighters, because you can go get your certifications here in Brevard County, but then get paid $15,000, $20,000 or more in our neighboring counties. That needs to stop. A stalemate issue that we're having is, one, we have a county attorney that's making over a quarter million dollars a year, but yet, we have to outsource the attorney for the negotiations? Our county needs to be more involved with protecting our firefighters, protecting our first responders. These people see the worst of the worst, and we are not paying them near what they're worth. That goes for teachers, law enforcement, firefighters, first responders. So many people are not getting paid what they are worth here, and we wonder why we can't have good jobs here in this community. We need to make a facelift in how we take care of our people, and we need to be involved in these negotiations instead of outsourcing it with another private attorney. We need to make the difference. Otherwise, when we call 911, who's going to come? We have to take care of these people, and it is an absolute disappointment that it has not happened already. It should not be any problem. We have millions of dollars getting misallocated for other things. We can look at that money and put it where it properly needs to be.
Okay. Thank you. The same question for Katie.
Thank you. So, I've actually went to the negotiation meeting since about February, and so I haven't missed one since. And what I can tell you is I was utterly disgusted with the way that the contracted attorney has been treating our first responders. One thing that I learned was that it's not $15,000 to $20,000. It's $20,000 to $40,000 less that they're getting paid from surrounding counties. This is not some small thing that our firefighters are being greedy. This is, they are being underpaid to an extreme, because our people care about our community so much that they are fine working under these conditions for this long, because they love our community. But it's time we stop that. It's time we pay these people what they're worth, and they're not asking for exorbitant amount of money. They're asking for the median income, which is fair. And it's not just about income. It's also about the work-life balance. So, what I would like to see in the contract is we need to address that work-life balance, and that's something to this point, the county has not been willing to look at. And so, that has to do with changing the hours that they work, giving them something that's called a Kelly Day, which gives them, you know, one day every two weeks that they can rely on for, say, doctor's appointments or something like that. So, the way that we're going to pay for it, one of the things that the county is not doing is we are not honoring our 1998 referendum. We are not collecting the money that the citizens said that we want to give this money to our firefighters. And so, that's going to be the first step, and I'm running out of time, but that's our first step into getting our firefighters their money. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And now, Nathan, the same question.
Thank you very much. And I first want to take a few seconds here, because I want, I hope every firefighter and first responder in District One and in all of Brevard County get super excited about the District One race, because their jobs, their livelihood, their families is not on the line. All three of us sitting up here support our fire department, and that's incredible. So, I wanted to take a minute, make sure we show their appreciation to everything that they put in. Now, with that said, our citizens, when they pay taxes, they expect a few things to be taken care of. Fire, sheriffs, roads, schools, the most basics. If you ask any citizen, and I've done this, is I've knocked doors. You ask him, "What do you think the top five budget lines are?", that's what they name off. Fire, sheriffs, roads, schools, usually the top four, right like that. But that's not how it plays out. That's not how our budget exists. And that is something I've actually advocated for all years, that we adjust our budget to show that, that our citizens expect it to be those top four items. We need to make sure that we are correlating our budget to what our citizens expect. And when that happens, our sheriff's department gets paid properly, our fire department gets paid properly, our schools are taken care of, and we still don't have to raise taxes because the money's already there. It's just appropriated correctly. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. And I don't know if you can hear that at home, folks, but it's raining pretty hard here, and I made that happen, because of course, I left my umbrella in the car. So, there you go. I'm going to go off-script here for a second, and we're going to keep the same order, because this is kind of a bonus question that I always like to throw in. Tell me something nice about each of your opponents. Brian, we'll start with you.
So, I have to say, when we all first started running, we got together and we said we had a responsibility to show people what politics could be and what it should be. And honestly, if other people would have made it through the primary, I don't know if I'd be able to say this, but it has been a very respectful and clean race that I've been very proud to be a part of.
I would have to agree with Brian. We joke now that, like, we've done the tour all around the county at this point, and it's been an honor to vie for your vote next to these two. And frankly, I hope that between all of us committing to not take lobbyist and developer money and also making the commitment to each other to not personally attack one another, I'm hoping we change the face of politics in Brevard County, because our county deserves it.
And like they both said, I greatly agree with that. The fact that we all decided no personal attacks, stay out of the nasty politics, that was a major decision that we discussed back at our first candidate forum a long time ago, and we have held true to that, so there's been none of the nastiness that occurs. However, we've still been able to disagree and get our points across. And I really will say, to answer your question directly, Brian is an exceptionally good speaker I have found out out of this.
Thank you.
Specifically, this man knows how to control his pitch, and I'd be willing to bet he was in theater at one point.
Rising stars.
There we go. I knew it. Katie, Katie is actually exceptionally well at primary psychoanalysis, as we found out. She knew how to properly target primary voters and go get those votes during the primary, and I congratulated her for that, because I thought it was an exceptional job.
Thank you.
Wow. A clean and civil political race. Who would have imagined that is possible? Thank you, guys, for that and for being so, so kind to each other. Okay. So, now, we're going to restart the order. So, I went off-script, so now I have to look again. So, this one will be Katie, Nathan, and Brian, okay? Florida's Live Local Act was designed to increase the availability of affordable housing in Florida. It also helps developers by allowing exceptions to zoning laws and also tax exemptions without public scrutiny and comment. How do you see this impacting Brevard County? We'll start with you, Katie.
I see it affecting us horribly, to be honest. It's, from the beginning of, when I heard that this bill was in the committee weeks, I was against this. Taking away home rule from local control is just, it's not right. And luckily, our county, or I should start with, luckily, our state legislature made a change so that the counties can opt out of the property tax exemption. So, thankfully, our commissioners did that, so now these developers will have to pay the property taxes. But no one can disagree that affordable housing is an issue, but the Live Local Act is not the answer. And I've got some things in my mind that I would like to tackle the affordable housing issue with, but I'm gonna fight tooth and nail against this bill until it's fully repealed because this is going to harm not only Brevard County, but the whole state.
Okay, thank you. And now Nathan, the same question.
Thank you for the question. And the Live Local Act, I am completely against. I do not like how it plays out. I believe it was created with a theory that it would work well, but as we've seen, it just does not work as anticipated. And so, what we, what we get is communities who get involved in their local towns, in their local cities, they go to the city halls when zoning comes up and they speak out and they have hours and hours of conversations with their elected leaders that they voted for to represent them. And if they choose to go with the citizens and against the developer, immediately they can just go to the state and say, please go around them. We've seen that happen recently in District One. We saw hours of debate at Titusville City Council. The council voted against it. And within forty-eight hours, I have a phone call that this project just applied to go live local. And so, that is not, I, I would like, I try and be an optimist here, I would like to believe that is not how it was designed, but that is sure how it plays out across Brevard County. Now, I am a home rule guy. I believe that local government is the most important government in our lives. I am not a federal power guy, I am not a state's power guy, I am a local power guy. I want Brevard County and the city of Titusville, the city of Cocoa, the city of Melburg, I want them to have the power to push back against the state. I don't want the state having the power to go around the elected officials that the citizens go and sit and talk to for hours. Because that becomes a waste of time and it becomes quite infuriating for everybody. Our, our Brevard County government and our local governments should be pushing back on the state and I have no problem leading that charge.
Okay, thank you. Brian, the same question.
All right, so, a lot of the greatest disasters in our history had outstanding plans and they didn't have those intentions to start off that way. I'm sure Live Local didn't start off as, you know, how it's, how it's planned, had the best of intention, but it's not there. There's nothing affordable about affordable housing in Brevard County. Everyone right now is feeling a pinch and if you can find an apartment for under fifteen hundred dollars, you're not living in the best part of town. There are so many changes that need to be done with this. Anytime we take the power away from our government and our local government and give it to a developer, we're messing up. And it's a huge problem. We've seen, and this is one of the biggest things that all three of us are talking about, developers do not have the community's best intentions in mind. They're worried about getting their money and getting out. When their development that they build floods your neighborhood, you can't go sue them, they're already gone. We need to have more accountability and this Live Local Act is not the right way to go. It, like Nathan said, like Katie said, is absolutely horrible. Anything to take away the responsibility or the, the vote of the, the leadership that have sat in their offices and listened to their constituents and voted as they felt fit and it takes that power away, there's another name for that. It's not good.
All right, thank you. And I would like to take a second opportunity again, just to thank the League of Women Voters of the Space Coast, along with my employer, Florida Today, and of course, Eastern Florida State College for the use of this auditorium and campus. Thank you all. The order for this next question, a hot topic all year, will be Nathan, Brian and Katie. Do you think it's fair to take money out of hotel tax revenue that is supposed to go toward tourism, marketing and grants for cultural and sports activities and tourism capital projects to use to pay lifeguards as the county commission just recently approved?
Thank you for the question. I actually put this out myself when this topic came up at the county and I said, I wanna hear what some people think about this. And I got a overwhelming response that people wanted the lifeguards paid for. What I did not get was that they wanted it paid for out of that fund. Is it okay, is it not okay? I'm personally caught between those two. However, if the citizens in the room are saying, hey, we don't need to be paying for this out of this fund, this is very specific money, well then we need to make sure that we're using it for what it specifically exists for. Again, taxes are paid with certain expectations. If those expectations are not met, we have upset citizens. It's our job as leaders to focus on those expectations. Lifeguards aren't the only hot topic when it comes to this specific tax expectation. We've had advertising become an issue with this specific tax expectation. When that happens, the leadership should sit in the room and say, what is the expectation of this taxes? That's what we're gonna stick with. And that's, that's what I plan on doing, is sticking with the expectations of the taxes that exist.
Okay, thank you. Brian, the same question.
So, I actually have quite a bit of experience dealing with hotel tax, tourism tax and seeing how that funding is spent. A lot of it goes towards our beach renourishment program, some of it goes towards environmental, a lot of it goes to our visit Space Coast, which is what advertises and brings tourism to this area. There's no doubt that we have Cocoa Beach, world famous Cocoa Beach, we had the, the Indian River, we have ecotourism, we have the Space Center and we got the mouse thirty minutes away. So, all this tax money that's coming in is paid usually from out-of-town guests, that's why they call it tourism tax. Now, all these extra people are coming in here, obviously, there's crowd on the beach, that becomes a safety issue. Right now, I think that that money should be used to pay for lifeguards to make sure our tourists are safe and our locals. You know what's really bad marketing is having a whole bunch of people get killed in a rip current. That makes it pretty hard. We already got the shark attack capital rolled about, you know, forty-five minutes north, we don't want to have other issues. So I think tourism tax being used to pay for lifeguards that are directly affected by the tourism, I think that's okay. And guess what? That takes it away from the locals having to pay for that tax. So that's okay with me. There's a lot of other things that we could look at, that we can be spending that money for, but for lifeguards, right now, lifeguards are associated with the fire department. We can't pay our firefighters enough. If we have an agency that's bringing more tourism and more strain to an employee department like lifeguards, let's let that tourism department pay for it and take one out of your pocket or put one back in your pocket.
Okay, thank you. Now we're up with Katie.
Thank you. I think that the consensus for the community is that people want lifeguards and they're okay with this money going towards lifeguards. The issue that we have to get through is the legality issue. Is this tourism money allowed? And right now, there's, there's a gray area in the law, which that's where the county is, is okay with doing this right now. But this is one thing that I think that our commission has not done a great job of and that's going and advocating to our state legislature. You know, unfortunately, the past couple of years, we've had our representative go to our state delegation meeting in Atoga and make, make fun of the situation where really we could've been advocating for this law to be changed to make it clear that, yeah, this money can go to lifeguards, it can go to public safety, it can go to, you know, whatever else the people think is necessary for these tourism dollars to go to. Because when, we are a tourism state, so when we have tourists flooding Brevard County, which we love, we want tourists to come here, we need to make sure that our services can support those tourists. So that's something that I'm gonna be doing, is making sure that when there's a downfall in one of our state laws, that we, we go, we go and advocate for our community to make sure that we're taken care of.
Okay, thanks. The order for this one will be Brian, I think, and then Katie and then Nathan. Hope I'm not messing that up. What do you think about the members of the community who provide public comment at our county commission meetings, who sometimes have had run-ins with our county commissioners and are being threatened or have been removed from meetings?
So, I always joke, I'll always love seeing Katie get thrown out of a meeting. But that's part of a problem. As accounting commissioner, our job is to listen to the people. Now, in the same term, as a person that comes up and wants to speak, you know, obviously be respectful, but there's a lot of passion that goes on, people are upset. People, there's so many issues that people can, can get up there and speak about and get really passionate about and might lose their respect, but you know what? It's the job of the county commissioner to sit there and listen to them. Accountability is the number one thing that I believe all three of us are wanting to see a change in, in our county commission. And if you're sitting there up on your dais and someone is calling you to the table because you're not doing your job, you should sit there and listen to it and adjust how you're being a leader. A lot of the leadership we have right now obviously doesn't agree with that and they just assume through, you have a meeting, there's a lot of political bullying, there's a lot of people that are just throwing that power around a little bit too much. And you know what? That is not acceptable. You just heard all three of us talk about how we've treated each other with respect and honor, how we've been going through this entire process. And politics is horrible. It really is, it sucks. But for all three of us to maintain how we've treated each other, it needs to carry on further to the people that are in leadership now and they're gonna take the place of all of them to come. We have a responsibility to the people to listen to them and if we're not, we're not doing our job.
I think, Brian, that you need a like t-shirt made up that says, "Politics sucks."
Absolutely.
Probably would be pretty good.
We can make that a hashtag and turn that into a whole thing.
And now Katie, we gotta hear about you getting thrown out of a, a meeting here? Did that happen to you?
Oh yeah, it definitely did.
Oh wow, okay. So this is right up your alley.
And so if I have time, I'll talk about that. But this is why, my, the number one thing that I talked about was public participation. This is near and dear to my heart. We have a First Amendment right to come to our, our elected officials and tell them when they're not doing the right thing or come and tell them when they are doing a great thing. And nothing in our First Amendment says that you have to do it nicely. Frankly, if a citizen has to come to a meeting and, and, you know, not be particularly nice, we've already failed because we didn't do a good enough job communicating with our people to make sure that people don't have issues so that they never come to the county commission in that way, that there's no need because we've already handled it and talked to them and worked through their issue. What I would like to see is, we need to make a more citizen-friendly public comment policy. We need to expand our Speak Up Brevard program, which is a program where citizens can come with proposals and not only does the commission have to vote on it, but the staff has to give feedback. And I would like to see a workshop so that we can actually really talk through those proposals that citizens come and bring. And so, when I have been advocating this year on different issues, there was one meeting where I, I just saw everything coming to a head and I just went up to the podium and I said, you know, these are the reasons X, Y and Z, why the citizens are feeling this way, why we're coming up here so frustrated, because the doors are closed. And at that point, one of the commissioners, as I was turning around, walking back to my seat, one of the commissioners was about to berate the public. And I just turned around and I said, no sir, no, we are not gonna do this. And then, you know, he ended up throwing me out. But you know what? I'll go down for the citizens any day, so.
Okay, thank you Katie. And now, we're up with Nathan.
Thank you so much for the question. So Katie's not the only person I've seen thrown out of, out of commission rooms or council rooms in the last, actually, I'm coming up on four years now of going to these meetings here in November and I have seen a few people removed from these rooms. And what I have seen more than anything though, is I see people come up and they speak on a variety of topics, whether it be sea turtles, whether it be roads, I've seen speed humps, I've seen, I'll never forget this, I've seen protesting dentists in a room. That's an actual thing that happened a few years ago. I have seen a variety of topics. And when people come up and talk, they give their three minutes and they're emotional, they're passionate, because these are things that matter to them individually. And here's what they get from the commission and from councils. Thank you, next. That has to stop. This is where leadership comes into play and this is where servant leadership comes into play. When somebody comes up to that podium and they give their few minutes, you listen to what they had to say and then as a leader, you want to turn that into a conversation because that makes them feel important, it makes them feel heard. And it doesn't mean you have to agree with them, but it does mean you need to listen, you need to put yourself in their shoes. You need to be able to say, okay, well, what led you to believe this about the sea turtles? Why do you think you need a speed hump? What can we do to further look at this? Where do we go from here? These are questions that require back and forth and our current commission will tell you flat out that they do not have conversations. They intentionally refuse to converse with citizens and I for one will not do that. It will be a two-way communication streak while you're on that podium.
Okay, thank you. And after this question, we're gonna start with Katie, okay? What are your views on county referendums on this November ballot to allow for a large increase in county commissioner pay and for extending the, the economic development tax break program for another ten years?
So, honestly, the, the county commission pay, I'm voting no. And I know that's controversial, but I'm a citizen too and frankly, if I'm, if I'm lucky enough to be chosen to represent you, I'm only gonna be there for four to eight years, depending upon, you know, if reelection is a thing. And as a citizen, I don't want to pay those taxes. And frankly, this is, this, even though I will be treating it as a full-time position, not every commissioner does that and so I just don't really feel like this is necessary. You shouldn't be getting into politics to get rich. So, that's how I feel about that. The, the tax abatement process, this is very controversial. And right now, we are having such a crisis with our, with our budget and being able to pay for things. I'm still kinda torn on it, to be honest, because on one hand, it's great that we have this, this, this thing that we can draw in business and they have to perform to get the money. They don't get this money upfront, they have to perform and they have to show results. So that's not the worst thing, but honestly, when we are looking at how are we gonna pay our firefighters handing over, you know, eight million dollars or whatever million dollars to this, that or the other business, that's, that's a hard, a hard one. So, I'm, I'm still thinking that one through, I gotta research it more.
Okay, thanks. You're up Nathan.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the question. So, the tax abatement program, and I love these questions because I've already done public explanations on both of these. The abatement program, I am going to support because it is a continuation of something that already exists. This is not a new thing we're starting out with, you currently have it, so however you feel about your life at the moment, it's not going to change. Spare any terrible decisions. But I touched on this in the very beginning because I would like to use that program to abate for environmental restoration and if it already exists and we can make changes to do that, then that's a positive. If it doesn't exist, then we're gonna have to create a whole new program, which is gonna get political in the long run. All right? So I wanna use the program to benefit our environment. So I'm gonna support it because one, it's a continuation, it already exists, I looked into it, it's pretty basic, I see no hot language on it, it's whether or not you just support it or don't. So I'm in support of it. The changing, changing how much the commissioner gets paid, I am voting against that for one very clear reason, and it's not actually the money. I'm a home rule person. I believe the county of Brevard County should be deciding how much money the Brevard County elected officials make. I don't believe politicians in Jacksonville, Miami, Tallahassee, Tampa, they should not be deciding how much we make. And this change gives the power to the state to decide how much the Brevard County people make and I'm not okay with that. I have personally gone into the commission rooms and spoken on how much our commissioners should make. And I want that to remain. I don't want the citizens to lose their voice, so I want them to continue being able to come in and have that discussion.
Okay, thank you. And now Brian.
So, someone once said, if you show me a rich politician, I'm gonna show you a crook. There's a lot of truth in that. I don't think that we should be voting on whether or not we get paid more or anything else like that. And honestly, if you went all the way up the, all the way up the line, I think that politicians should only be getting paid the medium, average income that's in their district. So if you got a district that's making you around twenty or thirty thousand dollars a year, that's what you should be making and that's, that's pretty much it. There's too much money going in places that does not need to be. When it comes to the tax referendum, I'm, I'm kind of on the fence, I agree with Katie, I agree with Nathan. I know that we are paying businesses that are coming into this area way too much money because most of them are gonna have to come here anyway. And if we are worried about having to, to give all these tax breaks for everything else and we're worried about finding money on how we're gonna pay our firefighters, we're not managing our money right. There is billions of dollars in our budget and you can't tell me you can't come up with enough money to pay a firefighter to kick in the door and save your enough money to pay a firefighter to kick in the door and save you? That is poor management. Instead of worrying about how much we're getting paid, or giving ourselves a raise or anything else like that, we need to make sure that our people are getting paid right. And no, it's stop paying these businesses to come in here and do business when they were going to come anyway. We're the Space Center. There's nowhere else that they're going to go. Why are we going to pay them to come here? Why are we going to give them all these millions of dollars in tax breaks, but yet someone that lives here locally, has lived their whole life, they've got to still pay taxes? I don't agree with it.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think that, you know, my boss is here, and I just want to on record that I'd like to see more pay. Just putting that out there, just, okay? And actually, we're going to go to one of the, like, questions that she likes to ask a lot, Mara, and we're going to go with Nathan, Brian, and Katie. Tell me about a time when somebody was able to change your mind?
About a time when someone was able to change your mind? Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, about a time when someone was able to change your mind about something, yeah.
You know what? The tax abatement program is one of them. Because when it first came out, I was vehemently against it. And I was like, we should not be picking winners and losers, but then I actually sat and listened. I took the time with an open mind, because that's something I like to do, and say, okay. I sat with one of the guys at one of the events and said, tell me about this. And he actually, I got the information on it, and then I went home, I did the research, and that's kind of when the idea triggered that, wait a second here, if we can use this for economic development, why can't we use this for environmental restoration? And that's when the idea started rolling. So my first answer to the tax abatement question was, no, I'm against it. But as time went on, and I talked to people, and I did the research, I said, whoa, you know what? This could be a benefit to Brevard. So instantly, you want to know a time when my mind changed? That's one very recently that changed on me.
Okay, thanks. Brian, the same question. When was the last time somebody was able to change your mind?
All right, so this is going to either go really well, or this is going to go off into a whole other direction. But when I was looking at running, we were looking at the fact that in North Brevard, Democrats are grossly outnumbered with registered Republican voters. They're like, it's going to be a no-win situation, there's no way you're going to be able to get a hold of this, and I honestly kind of believed it too. There's a lot of things that I've seen that, you know, people are just going to vote down the line, no matter what, no matter what. And not so much of someone in particular changing my mind, but throughout this entire process, I've seen community members come out and talk to us on all sides of the aisle, on the right, the left, the middle, and they care about what's going on in their community. They care how it's going to affect them. And I've heard Republicans say, hey, I'm going to vote for you. I've heard Democrats say, well, Nathan, they're going to vote for him. And it's, party lines are not as finite as we thought they were. And I think that we need to let go of, I'm just going to vote right down the middle. Let's vote on what's important, let's vote on the issues, let's not worry about someone has a D or an R in front of their name. And that really, seeing that, has changed the way I look at our local politics. So whereas we came into this race thinking there's no way in heck we're ever going to win this thing, we're all in it. And that has changed my mind completely, so that's it.
All righty, and Katie, the same question.
Thank you. As a fiscal conservative, one of the things that I was not very happy with, honestly, was the sorrel program. And I just saw the dollar signs, and I saw the fact that I didn't feel safe letting my kids go in the river. But as I've gotten more involved and started watching sorrel meetings and talking to the scientists, that's definitely something that has, my mind has changed about it. We definitely, while I think that there needs to be some tweaks to the language, like I said, I think it's something that we need, and so that's definitely something I changed my mind about.
Okay, thank you. So I think we have time for one more question before the wrap-up, but if, so if you want to answer this one with brevity, you can. The Space Coast area transit riders primarily use the bus to travel to and from jobs, or in-between multiple jobs. How would you address the growing demand for expanded routes? And we're going with Nathan, I think. No, we just did Nathan, right? We're going with Brian, Katie, and then Nathan.
Me?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so a lot of people are hurt right now. You know, a lot of people want to work, they just don't have a working car. We need to make sure that we're supporting our community the best we can. If we need to put more routes in there, absolutely 100%, but we actually had a forum with the Autism Coalition. And what we're seeing is a lot of people with special needs, they depend on these routes as well, and their special needs are not getting met. There's doctor's appointments, there's opportunities where people normally wouldn't have the opportunity to go have a job, and they can, but they just can't get there. So I think our public transportation system needs a serious overhaul. When I get elected, that's one thing I do want to focus on, not just for people that want to work or anything else like that, but we need to find a way that we can provide, someone agrees, that we can provide better transportation for people that want to make a difference in their lives. And not just people going to work, all people need to have that same opportunity. So we need to overhaul that, we definitely need to add more areas, and we need to have them run later. You know, what happens if you have a job that gets out at 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock? Are you going to ride a bike home, are you going to have to pay for an Uber, are you going to walk? You know, we need to make sure that we have public transportation running a lot earlier and a lot later, so we can provide for these people that need that income.
Okay, thanks. Same question, Katie.
Sure. I definitely agree that we need to make sure that our public transportation is supported and expanded as needed. The biggest issue that I'm seeing is recruitment and retention across the entire county. And it's very frustrating when we see the bloviated salaries of the highest level, like our county manager, county attorney, all of these people, and they're continuing to get raises every year. Yet, the people who are in the grind of keeping our county working, they get minuscule raises. And so when our people who are driving these buses are not feeling valued, that's a problem. And when our, like I said, the highest level of our government, they're getting paid, you know, almost $300,000 a year, with raises every year, we need to make sure that we're doing salaries differently.
Okay, Nathan.
Thank you for the question. This question actually gets to me. In 2014, my wife and I had just started out, with a fresh start in life, and I was working at a metal factory down in Cocoa, and living on Knox McGray up in Titusville. And for the first, I think it was eight months, I had to walk a mile down to the bus stop, get on the bus, ride down to Cocoa, walk a mile to work, and I was doing powder coating at American Quality Manufacturing down there in Cocoa, and I'm pretty sure they're still there, rocking and rolling too. And so, and then I would come home, covered in powder coating, which is like painting, for those that don't know. And I'd have to walk a mile to the bus, ride the bus all the way back to Titusville, rain or shine, and then walk a mile back to my house. So I have the experience of what it's like to deal with our bus system. So I can go work a day, work two days, work three days, with our bus systems, ride around with them, look at our routes, look at our demand, find out what we actually need. Because I can put myself in those shoes because I've been in those shoes. I know what it's like to have to take those routes. And yes, you're absolutely right, that some of those nighttime jobs need some nighttime routes. And if that's something we can make happen, I'm all for that.
I appreciate it, guys. I got a little greedy with that last question, so we aren't going to have time for the last statement, but I think everybody at home can agree that we pretty much know where you guys stand on stuff. Thank you so much for being here. Brian Bobbitt, Katie Delaney, Nathan Slusher. Once again, I'm John Torres with Florida Today Newspaper, and we really appreciate them being out here today. We've had some cancellations. And the League of Women Voters of the Space Coast, once more, thank you so much. And Eastern Florida State College. Once again, I'm John Torres, and thanks for watching.